So, this year we didn't have the mayor's achievement award. What should we call it?
You should, you should, what should we do here? I don't know.
Box cutting measure.
What was that, what happened to Maggie Gomez?
I think for sure.
Okay, oops. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would you please rise and join me in a salute to our flag?
A little bit better.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a religion and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Note for the record that all council members are present.
Thank you. Adoption of the agenda. Any deletions, additions?
Move adoption. Second.
Councilmember Conway, second by councilmember Waldo, oh, Mayor Pretend Waldo. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Next order of business is something we used to do at the Mission Blue, but this time we'll have it here. This is the mayor's achievement award. The mayor's achievement award began under the term of the then-mayor Clara Johnson in 2003. The purpose of this award is to honor Brisbane residents who have achieved recognition through exhibition, performance, or publication of their works of art. It also allows the community to understand the rich diversity of depth of talent that surrounds us. The program does not judge the value of an artist's work, but celebrates the recognition already given to the artist. Those selected must qualify according to guidelines established by the Brisbane City Council. Dolores Gomez and Christie Tillmaney have met the requirements through their work and publication of the book Brisbane: A Pictorial History Book of the City of Brisbane. And this is the book's cover. It is a little commercialism here. It was available at Barnes &amp; Noble. It sold out, but I think you can still order it from, through them. It's quite a, it's quite a book.
Brisbane Hardware carries it and a few other businesses.
Oh, do they?
Yeah, we're carrying it also.
Oh, good.
Well, they sold out too, huh?
Yeah. Great. Christie Tillmaney was born and raised in Fort Worth, Texas, graduated from University of Texas with a major in history. While working in St. Louis, she made the decision to come to San Francisco and began working at the Brisbane Library in 1974. Dolores Gomez was born and raised in San Francisco and began visiting her grandmother in Brisbane in 1940. Her family moved here in 1941. Attending local schools interested in history and genealogy, she began working at the Brisbane Library in 1963. Christie and Dolores enjoyed working together and both found an interest in the Brisbane Historical Collection. After both had retired from the library, Dolores was approached by Arcadia Publications about creating a pictorial history book of the city of Brisbane. The book would be part of Arcadia's Images of American Series. Dolores knew immediately Christie would be co-authoring the book with her. Familiar with the history and collection of Brisbane photos gathered over the years, the writing duo produced a book entitled Brisbane that holds over 200 vintage images along with a supportive narrative. Highlights of the book include images of the aftermath of the 1982 flood, long-distance and overhead views of Brisbane showing the continuing development from a town with a few structures to today's tightly-packed houses, apartments, and industrial parks, and celebrates the area's early pioneers, city organization, and activities including parades and celebrations. The Brisbane City Council and the citizens of Brisbane honor Dolores and Christie for their accomplishment and honor them with the mayor's achievement award. Would you both come forward, please? And?
Oh, my goodness. Oh, how beautiful. Lovely. Thank you.
Good for you. If you could say a few words, congratulations. Thank you for the call.
Well, no, you know, I'm super redundant. Maybe you want to come before the microphone, so.
Come on, Dolores. She knows you're gonna say.
To be redundant, I know Christie will agree with me that it was a labor of love that we worked real hard on for many hours, many days, had many sleepless nights worrying about things, couldn't sleep, so we did share that, so I know we had that in common, for sure, so.
I just have to agree with Dolores that it was, it was a lot of fun, and we're so glad that we were able to do it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And thank you guys for it. That's a beautiful book. I have a copy. Oh, yes. And I got mine at Barnes &amp; Noble.
Why my?
John Dolores said to have the meeting here so that way she'd get you out to a city council meeting. This is the only way.
You're right.
Once again, thank you very much for all your work and effort. Thank you.
Great job.
Yes, it was.
I spoke, too.
I'm glad everybody enjoyed it. We have nothing but compliments.
Yeah. It's fantastic. It was a great book. It's fantastic. It is a great book. All right. Next order of business is oral communications, number one. It's a chance for someone to address the council on matters not on the agenda. Do we have any takers? No? Okay. Let's go on to the consent calendar.
I'd like to remove item B.
B as in boy.
B as in boy.
I'll take item A off, and I have some comments on B also.
Okay. We remove item A and B, so the consent calendar leaves item C, which is the investment report, D, which is the award of the contract for the bike lane, and E, authorizing staff for the annual housing element progress report.
You know, if we could just, I just want to make a comment about D as well.
D? I can David?
Yeah.
Okay.
Move approval of item C and E.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for item C and E. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, let's start at the top. Item A.
Oh, mine, okay. Page three, under Subcommittee Reports, where it says, "Council Manager CM Richardson, updated the council on possible closing of Caltrain Station, the redevelopment agency proposal, upcoming TRACON meeting and a noise meeting policy group in DC." And I'd like to add just a little bit more on that one, because Seppi announced that she was going, and I just wanted to put in there that we had council consensus upon her going to Washington, DC.
So we add that Councilmember Richardson had council consent to attend the meeting.
Yeah, had council consent to attend a meeting on that.
Give you a motion to approve item A as amended.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Okay, item B as in boy.
On page two, under item C, it says the motion was carried four to one. It was carried four to nothing with Councilman Conway abstaining.
That's correct.
Anything else?
Make your motion.
And I have also a change, and this is, again, under Subcommittee Reports.
Okay.
And this had to do with Seppi's trip to DC, which is, and I'm sure you're gonna update it. You went already, right? And you're gonna update us later about it, but I had inquired about her getting her ticket and want to note that we did discuss it and that, you know, inquired on the purchase of the ticket, and also, we'll look at the cost maybe when Seppi updates us, so I just want to put that as part of the record, so.
Okay.
Okay.
With those changes, I'll move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. And I think that completes our consent calendar. Oh, item D.
Oh, item D.
Sorry about that.
That's okay, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to, you know, to highlight that, I guess we're, now we're getting into the second phase of completing the Bay Shore portion of, in Brisbane, of the Class II bicycle lane. And so are we finished with the southern portion of Bay Shore?
Yes, sir. The southern portion starts at the city limit with South San Francisco, where we have that kind of green pathway that jogs people over Bay Shore Boulevard, and it ends right now at Valley.
At Valley. And so this approval will then go from Valley to the northern border of Brisbane.
Yes, sir.
All right.
All done without any city money?
I wanted to highlight that, yes. Now, so we chose the cheapest bid, and after thorough research, it proved that that was a pretty good deal. Now, the funds to conduct this project were greater than what we chose to pay for it. So, does that money get returned to wherever it came from to be used in another bicycle type of project, or can the city use it for a different bicycle project?
Typically with a grant project, if you don't utilize 100% of the grant money, it's retained by the issuing agency, because these are done on a reimbursement-type basis. So they tell you how much money they are obligating or putting aside for you, and then you do the contract, and you send them the bill, and they send it back to you. It's highly unlikely that we could use it for another project, but my staff and I are already poring over the rules and regulations for this grant, and we are looking for ways to extend and increase the amount of work that we can do within this project.
Okay.
And we think we have found some ways that will be within compliance with those rules and regulations, so that we're, it's our effort and goal to use 100% of the grant.
You are. Okay. All right. Well, I appreciate that, you know, you're looking at other projects rather than just, you know, taking a higher bid and not really fully utilizing the potential of those funds, so thank you for that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
That is it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Is that a motion to approve?
That is a motion to approve.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Next item is item seven, Public Hearing, Consider Introduction of Ordinance Number 557, waiving first reading, zoning text amendment RZ-4-10, to amend Brisbane Municipal Code Title 17, Chapter 17.32, Section 17.32.050, Regarding Fences, Hedges, and Walls.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Over the past six to eight months, the Planning Commission has had a number of issues arise at the Planning Commission related to fencing. Some of the major issues have been the permitted heights in residential zones for screening and privacy, so fence height in residential areas, fence height in non-residential areas for security, if you're screening equipment, for example, or materials and the height of those fences, as well as appropriate fencing materials in various areas of the city. So there are a number of study sessions the commission held in November and January of this, November of last year and January of this year, and also at the commission's request, the city did publish an online survey requesting input from the community, and it was also made available in paper as well regarding some of these fence issues, particularly in residential zones. And we did receive 51 responses to that particular survey. The results of the survey are somewhat, are summarized in the body of your staff report, and certainly the recommendations of the Planning Commission did take that into account and are consistent with those recommendations from the survey. So again, the primary items were, again, the residential fence height, and the commission's recommendation was to allow the increased height from six feet, as currently permitted inside and rear yards, to up to eight feet, so long as the top two feet are constructed of wood lattice. So you have a six-foot-high fence with a two-foot lattice top, so a total height of eight feet in the rear and side yards. In regard to the issue of storage and screening storage areas, securing storage, recommended that the fence height in those zones be permitted, increased from six feet to eight feet as well. So that would be permitted by right for screening. And then the other issue was related to materials, in terms of fencing materials, and the recommendation of the commission was to allow chain link, barbed wire, razor wire, any of those sort of materials only through a fence exception process, which means a notified hearing and a hearing before the Planning Commission. So that was kind of the, the three areas were residential fencing height, industrial screen fencing, and the materials. And so those were the three recommendations. Commission did add some provisions related to the, ensure that fencing near the HCP area be designed in a way to accommodate butterfly travel, so there's some language that's been added to the ordinance in that regard. Commission also wanted to regulate other non-standard fencing materials through development of design guidelines to be approved later. In consultation with the city attorney, are recommending that that language just be limited to the specific area of the concern raised by the Planning Commission, which was the use of K-rail or similar barriers. So the language in the draft ordinance does prohibit those sort of fencing materials unless approved through a fencing exception through the Planning Commission process. So with that, staff is recommending adoption, introduction of ordinance 557. I would point out that the staff report, there's a redlined version of the zoning code amendment text, which shows the changes, both additions and deletions, to the current language, and that would conclude staff's comments.
Counsel question? Would you rather have the public first?
I have just one question.
Yes, sir.
If I may, Mr. Mayor. So, John, the K-rail barrier, that's, that's only applied to the residential in the NCRO district, correct?
Correct.
All right. So, you know, we had, we've had that situation in the village with the K-rail. So did the Planning Commission discuss that particular situation and how we can not have a problem like that again?
Actually, that was, the NCRO would.
That is, okay.
Address that particular issue, yes.
Okay. All other areas of Brisbane, then a K-rail for a barrier could be installed?
I think that's what prompted it to get put in.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. Okay, well, thank you for that clarification, John.
Anyone else?
I don't have any.
This is a public hearing. Anyone from the public like to comment on this?
Give you a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, how about the ordinance number 557? We have a motion to introduce it. So move.
One second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All right. Item B is Consider Introduction of Ordinance 558, waiving first reading, zoning text amendment RZ-2-11, to amend Brisbane Municipal Code Regarding Definition of Adjacent, Regarding Height Limit Exceptions and Requests for Reasonable Accommodations for Housing of Persons with Disabilities. That's an introduction of this ordinance, right? Okay.
That's correct.
Who's, please?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Again, state law requires housing elements to address the issue of removing governmental constraints to, that might preclude or inhibit the development of housing for persons with disabilities, and the recently adopted housing element contained a program HB, H.B.3.D., to, again, allow for reasonable accommodation of housing for persons with disabilities in regard to height limits. For example, if someone need to have an elevator or some other structure to provide access to their home, that there be a procedure that's less onerous than the typical variance procedure, for example. That's been done already for setbacks. The city adopted a program for setback exceptions to accommodate persons with disabilities and those kind of improvements required. This would extend that to building height as well. So that's the primary provision for this particular amendment. There are a number of cleanup revisions to the height limits as well that Senior Planner Toon has identified, again, from his experience here, that are sections in the code that are either redundant or somewhat unclear. You know, these relate to chimney heights, to make that, those provisions consistent with the uniform, the building code, to make it clear that telecommunications facilities are governed elsewhere in the zoning code, which they are. Like, would like to highlight that there's a simplified height exception procedure for solar energy systems to be recommended as part of this process, so again, that would hopefully simplify a process if an exception's required. There are some other technical changes regarding definitions, definitional language that has either been superseded or is redundant to other locations in the code. The Planning Commission on February 10th, 2011, did recommend approval of the ordinance as presented in front of you this evening. Staff would recommend the adoption or introduction of ordinance number 558. Again, I would point out that the version that was presented does show changes in red line strikeout, so that does reflect the changes that are recommended at this point. That would conclude staff's comments.
Thank you. Counsel?
I have more questions.
No question?
No questions.
No question? How about the member of the public would like to address this issue?
It's public hearing, right? Yes.
Yes.
I'll move.
No one?
We have, we have one, Mr. Mayor.
We have one. All right. Ray Miller.
Oh, different subject.
No, that's not for the, that's for the Baylands, right. Thank you. Sorry, Ray.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. How about the ordinance 558?
Give you a motion to introduce ordinance 558. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Thank you. Good job. Staff reports. City manager's report on upcoming activities, and actually he's gonna update us on tank farm safety.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The fire department has made successful contact with Kinder Morgan, and they have agreed to come and make a presentation to the city council and the community on April 4th. So they'll be coming forth at that time. I think it would probably be best to wait until then. The fire department also wants to do kind of an update on some safety measures that they've been working with Kinder Morgan. Apparently Kinder Morgan has a new regional director, regional manager, who is being a lot more responsive than I think what we've seen in the past. The mere fact that she's willing to come and make a presentation is, I think, a pretty good step forward. So we'll schedule that for April 4th and make some announcements of that in our various publications and to let the public know that that's gonna be taking place.
Thank you. Any questions of the city manager? No?
I do.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm glad that we have that on the agenda for the 4th. You know, since, well, ever since I've been on the council, I've had members of the public approach me about the tank farm, and there probably isn't anyone in town who likes it, but we also know that it's part of Brisbane, and we deal with it. But, you know, originally, the tank farm was brought to Brisbane because we thought it was gonna make money for the town, and eventually that wound up not being the case. So people have approached me about, is there any way that we can get revenue from the tank farm? And so I told people I'd mention it tonight and bring it to your attention.
Yeah, and I think probably what we want to do is maybe consult with the city attorney with regards to any measures that we might be able to take. I know the fire department is currently working with them to try to get some materials and various other, I guess, services relative to safety at the tank farm. But that is a specific, specifically related to the operation of the tank farm. I think, you know, what you mentioned in terms of what the past history with the tank farm was, is that there was kind of a general-purpose tax that the city received, I think it was a sales tax, and they are no longer a point-of-sale, and that's why we haven't received, received any funds from them. Whether there's any other mechanism that we could potentially use, I guess that's something we'll, we'll talk with the city attorney about and see. As you know, we're going forward with, or we're proposing to go forward in November with a business license tax that will deal with recology. I don't know if there's any, I don't, we'll, we'll try to get creative.
Sure.
See what, see what we might come up with.
Yeah, but you know, it is interesting, you know, you talk about the, the fire department and how, you know, with the disaster in Japan and how you have a major catastrophe, and also in San Bruno, the people that are supposed to protect us, they, they need to have the, not only the tools, but the know-how, the education, and perhaps if there was any disaster that would happen in Brisbane, it would, it would come from the tank farm. That would be on a very large scale, and perhaps having some kind of resources from them to help better prepare the town in a safety perspective. Might be something to look at.
Yeah, and I think that's exactly the tact of the fire department.
As you know, we're going forward with, or we're proposing to go forward in November with a business license tax that will deal with recology. I don't know if there's any, I don't, we'll try to get creative.
Sure.
See what, see what we might come up with.
Yeah. But, you know, it is interesting, you know, you talk about the Fire Department and how, you know, with the disaster in Japan and how you have a major catastrophe, and also in San Bruno. The people that are supposed to protect us, they, they need to have the, not only the tools, but the know-how, the education. And perhaps if there was any disaster that would happen in Brisbane, it would, it would come from the Tank Farm. That would be on a very large scale, and perhaps having some kind of resources from them to help better prepare the town in a safety perspective. Might be something to look at.
Yeah. And I think that's exactly the tact that the Fire Department is, is looking at right now. I would just note that these are not pressurized tanks, so the kind of explosion that you saw in San Bruno is not, you know, just wouldn't come from a facility like that. But the Fire Department is in contact with them and evaluating the likely kinds of scenarios and kinds of safety issues that those, you know, would, would evidence themselves for, for us. And Randy Broh, our emergency services coordinator, is also involved.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a-
Yes, sir.
In regards to the Tank Farm play, I guess the Regional Water Quality Board has also been working with the Tank Farm on some alleged discharges or something into the Guadalupe Canal. Or there was some cleanup, not, not what I term as, what do you say, on purpose, but, you know, accidental discharges or sea beach or something like that.
There has been a past incident of that nature, I know. And we'll bring forward to you what, what information we have. As you indicated, the Regional Water Quality Control Board deals with issues like that. In terms of regulation, the State Fire Marshal actually regulates the Tank Farm, not the, not the city of Brisbane. But we'll try to bring forward all that kind of information so that people have a clearer picture of how, how the oversight of the Tank Farm works and what issues do exist out there.
Okay. And could also update the council in regards to the PG&E meeting in regards to the high pressure transmission lines, gas lines that kind of border Brisbane?
You want me to do that now?
Yeah.
Or, well, okay. Well, and if Councilmember Conway and Mayor Ballgoff were part of the, that meeting, we did meet with PG&E this, or past week, and they walked us through the issues with regards to the two lines that are here in Brisbane and the, the maintenance that has been done and will be done relative to those. You know, I didn't bring my notes with regards to the outcome of that meeting, but I don't know if either one of you want to input.
Yeah, they, well, there's, there's two valves. I, I think that, you know, one of the things that they're looking at is some of this line that was put in, like the piece in San Bruno, I guess they had some stuff that was undocumented. And I believe that they said that the line that borders Brisbane has very good documentation on it, so that they're able to find, you know, all the maintenance records and how it was built and everything like that. But they're going to video all the segments that they can, from visual video, not doing what they call pigging, which is more of an electronic measuring device. They do it, and they're going to look for any, any type of erosion. But they're also going to section the line off and do hydrotesting using water and pressure and pressuring the lines that way. And they're going to separate, I think, on the South San Francisco side, the border of San Francisco side and back pressure. But, you know, they don't know yet what the maintenance plan's going to be for that that goes over the wildlands, over San Bruno Mountain. The, the line, I guess, going down Bay Shore is the newer line. They have one valve in the north area. They're going to install a, a automatic shut-off valve, which currently it doesn't have an automatic shut-off valve in case of the pressurization. And also, there's one in, I think, in the South San Francisco area. They're going to change that out. And those lines can run either way. They're bilateral, bilateral or, you know, goes both directions, depending on what their usage is. What else did they say about that? Line currently is operating at 300 PSI?
Correct.
And that it was operating anywhere, it's, it's designed to operate between 375 and 400. And it was at 375 when the San Bruno incident happened, so there's like peaks and valleys. But right now, S P U C or P U C is making them operate at 300 PSI only. And that'll probably be bumped up. And that's probably about it, so. They got lines that run all the way from where? New Mexico or somewhere like that?
Yeah, in Northern California.
Yeah, they come all the way up through there. And so, as they're saying, one of the reasons they're missing so many records is that through the years, PG&E has purchased, you know, little, smaller companies, and they don't really have good records on those. But the line that goes over San Bruno was built in the 50s, the same as the one in San Bruno was. It's the same age, so maybe it was by the same people. I don't know.
What's the distance from the residential community and those lines that are running over San Bruno Mountain?
Here.
Yeah. It's fairly far from central Brisbane. It's, gets a little bit closer when you get into the back end of the northeast ridge.
Northeast ridge?
Yeah.
It's, it's pretty close to the ridge?
The, the, where the single-family homes are?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Closer to there, so it's, and the other one runs down Bay Shore Boulevard.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think the other kind of, I thought was interesting comment was on just the, the safety of the lines themselves, been the age, the age of the line is, is really not that relevant to the, to the safety.
Yeah, it's, you know, how, how well it's been kept from the elements is the main thing.
Sure. I'm sure how well it's monitored as, as well.
Yeah, it's going to be interesting what they come up with. But they're going to, they have a bunch of segments that's replaced or slated for replacement, but these lines are not, right now.
Because they're in good shape or accessibility?
Well, they, they think that all the records and stuff are showing that they are, but, you know, they, like you said, they got to run the video cameras down them and do much more extensive testing internally. And that's the reason that they're breaking it open and sectioning the line out. They're going to do this hydrostatic testing and pressure testing, so.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe, maybe when they're, when they're through with that, they could give us a report, you know, visual aids and, and let the people know exactly what's going on in our city.
Yeah, you know, that'd be fascinating to see it on the screen.
Yeah.
As we're going through that, that line.
That way everyone on TV can, can watch as well.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anything else?
The, the only other item is the status of the redevelopment agencies, still clinging to life.
Gaspin for breath.
Perhaps. Perhaps gaspin for breath is a, is a good analogy. The legislature apparently still doesn't quite have the numbers to, to do the actual kill. So, we'll see. And then there, there's also talk about coming back, even if they do approve the legislation, coming back with some policy legislation that will, that could mitigate it, or mitigate in some fashion the, the actual bill that would kill it. I'm not quite sure how that works, but that came out from CRA today. So, we'll see. It's, it's still, the battle isn't quite, quite over yet.
I understand that the governor, who was it? Senator Steinberg said today in the news that they don't want to put, they're not going to be able to put their tax extension in June, by June 6th. They want to put it in June 14, a week later, to be in coordination with the Flag Day. This gives them more time to do what they need to do because they don't think they're going to meet the time, timeline.
Yeah, their time is slipping, you know.
Yeah.
I, I don't know, frankly, if that's really connected to the decision on redevelopment because the redevelopment is a, is a budget cut as opposed to the, you know, the, the extension of the taxes, which is what they're trying to get on the ballot.
Right. Where the connection is, if the league is right now, because of this redevelopment, is not supporting the governor's budget. And the governor's budget does include this, putting the-
One cent sales tax.
Sales tax extension. That's indirectly comes to board.
Okay. Anything else, Clay?
Not at the moment, no.
Okay. Mayor, Councilman, and the subcommittee reports. Do we have any?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
First of all, thank you for allowing me to go to Washington DC and meet with these people. It was truly an eye-opening. It was an eye-opening in the fact that, I, I'd like to just thank our city attorney in one area that at times I get frustrated, but City of Santa Monica sued the airport. And they have spent over a million dollars, and they're still not getting anywhere. And they are going to appeal the decision, and where they're getting the problem, pretty much to the same level we are getting the noise. And theirs is coming from a lot of private jets and planes, which can be deadly. In downtown Manhattan, the noise level from helicopters, killing people. And they work with Senator Schuman to change the path, to take the path more to the water. So, the agenda included having representative, there was an agenda, but there is a, there was an item in the agenda that there's a company that collects all the noise data and does their noise management, coordinate with the people, and would come with you to go discuss the issue with the airport or FAA, which we don't need anything like that. We're doing all of it ourselves.
They analyze the data.
They analyze on a live, instantaneously, what is the impact, who's going where, who's going. We've been able to get those information from airport noise. One thing that I really found that to be, I've been very critical of the airport, and at times I've been rather very rude, if I should say. But after I went up there, they told me, they couldn't believe that we actually have had meeting with John Martin. They couldn't believe that actually John Martin himself called the staff, have sat with us directing the information or trying to get, they said that never, ever have had any opportunity like that for the airport director. So, I, I would love to send him a card, to thank him, for him to have been so open to listening to our concerns and wanting to do it. The bottom line is that FAA information about noise and their guidelines is based on what happened in the 70s. And the data that they have collected is not from the United States. They're all from Europe. Okay? Everything is based on that. There is a, the Transportation Research, Research Board gets to do a lot of research. The research is from, for example, cities like us. Send the problem statement to the Transportation Research Board, the air quality, quality of life, and so forth. If the problem statement that we are stating is, is not just unique to Brisbane, and it could impact other cities in the United States, they would take the issue and do a lot of research on that. When I found out about the noise impact that they make research, not the Transportation Board, but the FAA and the information that they have been using, a lot of time, the research that they have done on noise is in a very protected environment. It's in a room, so it really does not justify the noise level that you see outside. They say, for example, this noise monitor is really good, is going to give us the impact of noise in the cities and, or 65 decibel, 85 decibel. But they've found out that they're all in a laboratory setting, not necessarily in the real world. FAA, there was a lady from FAA, Mary Lynn Pickard, she's the senior policy advisor. She was one of the speaker. She was really good about saying all of these things about research has been done in the 70s. We don't have current information at all. The Research Board, the Transportation Research Board, and them have been working to really understand that this 65 decibel is not sufficient. They need to look at single event impact on cities, rather than taking the average noise decibels, decibels. They realize that they need to do something. They need to update their noise information that reflects today's life and what is happening in the United States. So, they like to do that. They're doing a lot of work. And they gave the name of the senator and congresspeople that are involving this, the legislative body. It's really, these are some of the bills that they're working right now, to, to change the day and night sound level to, right, looking at single event. There are so many bills.
The sound travels-
Correct.
Further at night than it does in day.
Correct. Correct. So, truly, a lot of things were happening. The good thing about it, they don't have this noise meeting by itself. They have it with the National Comfort League of, National League of Cities because they're realizing there wasn't, before, the attendance used to be four or 5,000 people. Right now, it's gone down to 1,500 because of the cost and because of the city's budget. Not too many people attending. But they really want to have more membership because then collectively they can have a lot of impact. The issue about federal government not having a budget puts, put them in a very awkward situation. How much can, how much of these things that they realize that is not good, how much of this can they really accomplish? The things that, there was a gentleman that works at Federal Aviation Administration, the Environment Department. He told, I told him that we're meeting with FAA, with TRACON and so forth. He said, the, the things that they said, be, have them to be very, very detailed about what they're saying. What is the path? What is the agreement of the airlines that they have with the SFO? When can they change that path? When they cannot change the path? Do not get into a fight at all. Don't get into disagreement because you're not going to win. Get into a dialogue and agreement with them. And before you go, collect a lot of data. Collect a lot of data that when you're talking about airline is coming this way or that way, give the exact flight that you're talking about, the time and date, so you have concrete information. At the meetings, make sure you take the notes of what they're saying, what they can and what they can't do. Because they said, get all that information and call him. Then he would be able to say, you know, what we could do, what we shouldn't do, and what we should do. He said, after you're done with the TRACON people, write a letter and summarize the understanding that you had from the meeting that you had with TRACON people, which we know that. The letter must be sent to Barbara Boxer, Dan Feinstein, Jackie Spear, John Martin, and the head of the FAA. Don't bother sending to the departments because it wouldn't do any good. And-
So, he works for the FAA, and he's, he's trying to tell you how to communicate.
He was telling, he was telling me exactly. They were very impressed that John Martin has been involved with us. Very, very impressed. So, overall, it was really incredibly interesting. But again, the attendance is down for them. The next time they get together is in Arizona, that you, you knew about that. And if there is somebody else that is an alternate, maybe next time, the alternate can go and check it for themselves. I found it to be informative. At the policy level, you're right. And that was my summary about.
Thank you.
So, we have a, a trip going to TRACON, which is FAA-
Yes.
-on 31st, which is next Thursday.
Yes.
And who all was going? There's like 15 people?
There's staff, citizens, and councilmen.
Yeah.
And he said it is really important to have a good showing.
So, are we going to be able to get some of this data? Sepi talked to you, you talked to staff about getting this data, that if we're going to take and present to them? Or is this just like a, a three-hour tour? You know, I mean, kind of, you know, like going, oh, this is this, that's that, and this is how we do things? Or are we going to have a conversation?
I have gone. I've gone to TRACON tour. Yes, they do have a tour. Then they take you also to- Then they take you also to where the air traffic controller for the TRACON.
Well, let me ask, let me ask this to staff, Seppi.
Sure.
I mean, the purpose of this trip.
Yes.
Is this a tour or is it a communication?
As I understood it, it was a combination of a tour and an opportunity to get to know the people from TRACON on a one-on-one level and then to bring people from the community to show them that this wasn't just, you know, council and staff, this was the community that had a concern over this.
Oh, okay.
Once we've established that, then I think the Councilwoman Richardson and I, our conversation was that then to kind of double back with the airport director who has, and I agree with Seppi, he's been very open in terms of meeting with us and having his staff work with us, so we should take advantage of that.
Yeah.
But then to double back with them and then see what specific strategies we can start to try to pursue, what data we need to generate. Because the airport, as we know, has the data. So the idea there would be to come up with, you know, what sort of strategy and what strategy the airport is willing to support and to back.
Yeah.
And the thing that, today I talked to Bob Weatherly, is the Vice President of their Virgin Airline Operations. Virgin is going to increase tremendously, they're gone, who are very aggressive about their expansion of increasing flight. He told me, he got information from the airport that Brisbane is complaining, the noise level has gone tremendously. So he said he started working with Oakland because they are the ones that are telling them to change the route. They're telling them that take, do this way, do that way.
Oakland?
Oakland. Oakland, in none of our meetings, do you remember, Clay?
I thought it was TRACON that was.
We heard, once it leaves the airport, TRACON.
This is the head of the operations for Virgin, telling me it's the Oakland that is telling them to make the turn faster because of safety. I said, Bob, I don't want to hear about the safety, there's a prescribed path. And I really appreciated what that guy told me. Find out what is the prescribed path and when they can deviate, when they cannot. But FAA can always.
See you, John.
Thank you. FAA can always go behind the safety and do what they want to do. But truly, we need to concentrate a lot on what is the impact of Oakland Airport to us? What is Virgin's? Because if they're expanding like the way they're talking about expanding, we are going to be in a mess.
So, Seppi, I just had one question for you, and that was the bottom line, what do we end up spending on a trip?
I think, where is, where is, Wendy, Wendy, no, she did all the arrangement for the flight and hotel. Was it about a thousand dollars? The visit to Washington DC?
Twelve hundred.
Right. The rooms, the rooms were three forty-nine and.
Wow.
We couldn't get, we couldn't get the.
That was at Motel Six?
But if you know what they put me through that night.
Yeah.
It is, that's a different story.
Yeah.
But.
You don't want to know.
Yeah, yeah, this is beyond this place of here.
Yeah.
Thank you, Seppi.
Thank you.
Thanks, Seppi.
Any other subcommittee reports?
I just.
Yes, sir.
Had, it was more of a comment that, and Clay, maybe you can refresh my memory, but we used to have payment registers on the council agenda and now, now we receive them. And I know a number of years ago, we said, oh, this, and I forget what the reason was that we say, oh, we'll do it offline because.
I'll kick this to the finance director.
Okay.
There's, we've gone to producing our payment registers every other week. So there are times that we are producing payment registers that without, because there are times that there are council meetings that are every three weeks distance. So part of this, there are times we produce payment registers when there isn't a council meeting. And also, when you go dark in, over December, when you go dark in the summer, if we waited for the council meetings, it would be past the time a number of the bills were due.
Yeah.
So we figured this way, we're keeping council up to date. If there are any questions that council members want to ask, we always wait till after the payment register has gone to the council before we mail any of the checks. So that's the reason we're doing it, is to make sure that we are timely paying our vendors.
Yeah. Well, maybe, maybe we can do both, I mean, without creating too much. Because I know I had some citizens, you know, through the years have asked me, and then some concerned citizens asked me again lately, like, you know, we used to do this for years and now we don't do anymore. So we don't really, you know, hear anything about, you know, the questions that are asked and, you know, stuff like that. And it's kind of like the perception that the council's doing their due diligence of looking at the payment registers and it allows the community to look at them also. Maybe that's a question to the council, maybe just putting it in our packet, not necessarily saying it's for approval, but, you know, allows people to view it, the public. And I guess I'd ask that to the council if you.
Just to follow up on that, Clark, if, if anyone questions an item, but you would have already paid it, how do we?
Well, we don't mail the checks until after, you know, we mail the checks on Tuesday. And we always try and put the payment register in your box on Thursday or Friday. So if you have a question, as was always in the past, on Monday, you know, on Monday, we have not mailed that check yet. So we, you know, we hold those checks. And if we need to question further from the vendor, or we need more information from the department that's, you know, processing it, we'd be able to do that before we actually made a payment to the vendor. At least the way we're doing it now, the question, of course, I think, is if we put ones that we've already paid in the packet, I would agree with you, Mayor, that it becomes a little bit more difficult from the timing. Because, you know, if we're dark for three weeks in between meetings, you know, we may be running against late payments from some of our vendors. And we don't want to pay vendors late. And especially when you're dark over the Christmas time period, the holidays, or you're dark over your summer recess, you know, we still need to make payments to our vendors. So we could, you know, do, if you want to have it as part of your packet, we can do all the ones that we've processed through that day, you know, in the packet. But it doesn't necessarily mean that we'd be, we could hold the checks that long.
Well, I, yeah, and I'm not suggesting that we hold, hold back the checks. I think maybe just take it to a step of at least bringing the payment register back to the packet where the public can view it. Because right now, I don't think the public viewing the payment registers, does that make sense?
Yeah, it, we can certainly do, you know, we, I mean, if it's a matter of just putting it in the packet and allowing for questions, that's, that's fine. You know, there's always been kind of this kind of disconnect with the payment register because.
Yeah.
For the vast majority, I'd say ninety-eight percent of it, I mean, we've already purchased the material, we've already.
Right.
Assumed it, we've already used it. So there's really not a question of whether or not we're going to pay for it.
True.
There's, I think, only a question, if a question comes up, why are we doing a certain thing? Or why are we doing this certain thing a certain way?
Or what is this for?
Yeah. Well, it can be illustrative in terms of future actions.
Yeah.
But yeah, let me, Stuart and I can talk and come back with you with a suggestion of how we could bring it forward.
Yeah, bat it around. I think it's just mainly, you know, to help with, with the public, you know, kind of looking, especially financial times and us being the politicians, you know, we're the ones that got to answer to the public, so, you know.
Transparency is always a good thing.
Yeah. Okay, yeah. Let me get back to maybe with next meeting with a little idea. Okay, very good.
Anything else?
No.
I got a letter from the grand jury judge asking for names of possible nominees to serve on the civil grand jury. I'm only stating, I'm only mentioning this now, so that any member, any person out there listening and is interested in serving on the civil grand jury, you may contact, who has the information now?
You can contact.
You can contact our city clerk and she can give you the number to call and volunteer for. It's, it's quite an interesting experience and someone may want to, fine. And we'll also put it in the Brisbane News, so they'll give, they'll give, you know.
You've served, you've served on the grand jury, right, Son?
I have, I've served first year as an alternate and the next two as full-time grand jury. Yeah, it's, it's quite an experience, it's a real interesting experience.
So it's a way of somebody getting involved in civic process without having to commit to something fully? Because how, they don't, how often they meet, you know, like once, twice a year, three times a year?
No, no, these, it depends, we met, I think, once a month.
Once a month?
Yeah. It depends on what you're doing. You could be, when I was on the grand jury, we were investigating East Palo Alto as the murder capital of the world.
Oh.
So that involved a lot more meetings because you had a lot more law enforcement personnel there. But it doesn't have to be that often, so.
Yeah, okay.
It's a way to serve if you wish. Then I got a letter from the mayor of Daly City announcing that this is their one-hundredth anniversary and they're going to have a kickoff celebration on Tuesday, March twenty-second, tomorrow, from five-thirty to seven-thirty, or they changed it to six-thirty, Sharon?
I think it's a five-thirty to seven-thirty.
Okay, five-thirty to seven-thirty. And I have a commendation which I'll, I'll take with me and present it.
Okay.
They said it's not going to be, it's not going to be one of those things where everyone reads proclamations and all that.
Right.
It's just kind of a party kickoff.
Yeah, I guess they're doing Bring Your Own Six Pack, the one we talked about.
Absolutely.
Because, you know, it's kind of funny, Daly City's fiftieth anniversary in Brisbane, or our fiftieth anniversary.
And their one-hundredth.
Daly City's hundredth and.
And Abag's fiftieth.
And Brisbane Elementary School's seventy-fifth.
Seventy-fifth. Abag fifty, so. Okay, that's all I have right now.
Missed item C.
Yeah. What?
You missed item C.
I missed item C? Oh, yeah. Consider setting Monday, April the fourth at six PM for the annual city manager's evaluation and Monday, April eighteenth at seven PM for the annual city attorney's evaluation. You mean seven PM?
Yeah, I, I misbehave more, so you need an hour and a half.
Well, let's see, I think we have an expectation when you, when we evaluate you and I.
You'll be at Fed.
Food.
You guys are part hourly.
That's right. There you go. Talking to Al.
You're out of there, Al.
Yeah, Hal, you're a part-time worker.
I'd suggest both dates and times are fine.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? The ayes have it. Thank you. Any other mayor, council matters? No? Okay, let's go on to all communications number two, and we have a letter here from, slip here from former mayor Ray Miller, who wants to talk on Bayland Thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. First, I want to wear my hat as the Chair of the Open Space and Ecology Committee and thank the council as a body and thank especially council members Conway and Lance for coming to our energy savings forum, which I think was reasonably successful. Hope you agree.
Yeah, I think it was great. Thank you for putting energy into that.
Very good.
No pun intended.
The second subject, which is what I put on the slip that I submitted, is some thoughts that I've had personally in terms of just keeping the conversation going on the Baylands. And so these are ideas, just throwing them out, and I hope the council will consider them positively and it really suggests certain things should be agendized. The first observation I have is that if you look at the website, which I'm sure not very many people have done, and read all the scoping letters for the Baylands EIR, you find a lot of really interesting questions and concerns that various agencies have. And I would think.
Website?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
And I would think it would be helpful to the public and even, of course, to the council, to have, I know John Sawicki's going to stab me in the back here, but to have a staff summary of some of the really interesting concerns that are raised in the scoping questions. And that also, in the process of presenting it publicly, will bring it to the attention of the general public. What are all these things that are raised? Because now, you know, nothing's going to happen until the EIR is ready, and that's going to be many months from now. And yet, the Baylands is kind of the biggest thing that's going to be happening to Brisbane over many decades. And we ought to keep talking about it. And one way of talking about it is just sort of summarizing the key concerns that have been raised by all the different agencies, public agencies, that have responded to the call for scoping. So that's one suggestion that, sorry, John, but I thought it would be very helpful to have, because there's a lot of good questions raised in there, a lot of interesting information. And not too many members of the public are going to work their way all through that. One of the interesting things, and this shows the connection between all these matters, I noticed that there are no submissions from either of the elementary school districts that are involved, Bay Shore and Brisbane. And that's particularly important, and I think it needs to be reiterated over and over again, that the Baylands is in the Bay Shore Elementary School District, not Brisbane. And as many people have noted at many of those meetings, in order for this, you know, school fiscal financial situation to be addressed, there probably needs to be some kind of merger consideration between those two school districts. But neither one of them even asked for that kind of information to be studied. And maybe that's something else you want to think about because I asked a member of the school board, has this question been really seriously investigated? And the answer I got was, it's been talked about over and over and over again, but there's never been a really serious study of, you know, what are the fiscal processes, what are the consequences of merging, you know, what are the per capita revenue potential and blah, blah, and so forth? And yet, this is all connected to the Baylands because the Baylands are in the city of Brisbane, but they're in the Bay Shore Elementary School District.
I think we got an update for you on that.
Yeah, yeah. Elaborate a little.
All right, well, I'd be interested in that. Anyway, it struck me that they don't, they didn't even ask for, you know, something that's very much in their interest to be studied in the EIR. So that's my first big suggestion. The second part of my comment has to do with, I probably shouldn't say this, but quote, "I told you so." You may remember, I pointed out that the Sustainable Cities SB three seventy-five that look out for what's going to happen. Well, the initial study has now been made available. And you will not be surprised, I was not surprised to see, that of the one hundred and one cities in the nine counties of the Bay Area, guess what city is expected to have the largest percentage growth in its housing?
Brisbane, of course.
Of course. And that actually is two hundred and eight percent over the period of this Sustainable Communities Program, which is from two thousand ten to two thousand thirty-five. The only city that comes close is Colma. And of course, their numbers are smaller. Now, I compared that, and somebody said, well, the good news is that what they're suggesting, which is to have in two thousand thirty-five, to have three thousand five hundred and ninety-four additional units, well, at least that's not as much as what UPC has in its plan, which happens to be four thousand four hundred and thirty-four, which is a two hundred and fifty-six percent increase in the housing in Brisbane. So two comments on this. One, your staff and your various advisory committees will be giving you our suggestions as to how to respond to this neutral scenario because there will be several months in which all the cities involved will have an opportunity to respond to these numbers, projections, suggestions. And there will be a number of meetings coming up, and I'm sure it'll be agendized and, and you'll hear about it and have to decide what to do. The second thing, I'd like to. The second thing I'd like to bring to your attention, though, is just for you to discuss it. And that is, does the EIR really need to study 4,434 housing units in Brisbane as a part of the Baylands development? Would it be appropriate for the council to say, we don't want to even consider that amount, we want to set a cap of whatever that is? And this is the extent of what will be studied, sending a message to the developer that, you know, this is kind of the outside limit of what this council's prepared to accept. Now, I'll defer to the city attorney, of course, but I believe the council has the legal right to do that. Now, if that's the case, it would be a very interesting conversation among the council members as to whether, because almost everyone says this is way too much. Okay, so what is too much? You know, where do you draw the line? What do you want to tell the developer? We heard the other night from a planning consultant who said, you know, the sooner you communicate to the developer, you know, where your bottom line is, the better off you're going to be in the negotiation process. So anyway, I'm making this not as, that I'm advocating a particular number or anything, but I think it's a conversation that the council should have. And I think it would be instructive for the community and you also would get some feedback. And this really is a policy issue. You don't need an EIR to decide this, in my opinion. Anyway, those are my Baylands thoughts for the council and I hope you find them helpful.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you very much.
You know, I just want to make a comment.
Please.
If I may. In the, in the subcommittee feedback, you know, we've had one subcommittee, one sustainable subcommittee meeting since our last council meeting. I didn't give you an update because the, we still have not received all of the feedback that we were hoping to receive from these three organizations that, that look at creating sustainable systems. And so, of course, in the dialogue that we have had with two of them, you know, they, you know, they're looking at sustainability in a, I don't know, more like, like you're taking a class at a school, right? I mean, and so they have, it's very, you know, by the book, you know, and it doesn't factor in all the different components of, of a community. I mean, there are some, I will say that the One Planet Living model does try to incorporate that, but, you know, eventually, it is a question that I think will come out of that subcommittee that will be before the council. So I, you know, I think eventually we will have something for you from that subcommittee that will look at, here is, here is a sustainability model that, or several models that we've discussed and the issue of housing will be before the council to look at that. But, so I'm just, I'm just kind of bringing out what Ray had put forth in his oral comments.
For me?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, I mean, there's quite a bit that Ray had said in, I guess, asking the council was, is, I do find if John did give us an update on some of the interesting comments from the scoping comments, that if John, if you're prepared to do that, not tonight, but it may be in a subsequent meeting on April 4th. And then Clay, maybe you can give the update in regards to his suggestion regarding Brisbane Elementary or Brisbane School District and Bayshore.
Yeah, I can respond to that right now if you'd like.
Yeah, that would be nice, so.
The, you know, I mean, I think the reason that the school district didn't request anything with regards to that and the EIR is it's really not an EIR question, it's a financial question. And they, the superintendent last week at their meeting did bring to the board the idea of hiring a consultant to come in and to look at a variety of different financial option sorts of questions, and one of them being, what if the Bayshore School, or the Baylands was in the Brisbane Elementary School District? Because there's really two ways to potentially approach that, either it annexes into the Brisbane Elementary School District, or you do a merger with Bayshore. Those are, those are two potential possibilities. And there, and I think there's probably actually another one also out there. Anyway, we had a meeting last week with Universal Paragon Corporation over this, this issue, because it's obviously of great importance to them and they see it as potentially having some value to the community. So they are willing to support the school district in the terms of the, whatever it costs to do this study. The study would be done, conducted by the school district, the consultant would be hired by the school district under their management control, but UPC would, would fund it. So that's the conversation we had last week, I believe that's what was reported out to the school board on last Wednesday. And I haven't had a conversation with the superintendent since then, so I'm not sure exactly what their, what their timing is, but my understanding was that she wanted to move forward with that fairly soon.
Okay. And then I guess the third one is in regards to any EIR. Do we need to study, and I guess this is to you, Hal, are we, A, are we required to study the full amount of housing that's being requested by UPC in their specific plan in the EIR?
I'd rather deal with this later on, take a further look at it, I'm not, you know, this just came up tonight as a proposal. I think we need to have some further discussion, I don't want to give you an off-the-cuff answer.
Okay, all right. And then.
Piggybacking on that, does not our general plan prohibit housing in the Baylands?
Yeah, part of the application is an amendment, an application for amendment to the general plan to allow housing. So the question is, if that amendment is approved, how much would you allow? And I do think we need to have some discussion on that. I, and I don't think this is the time or place to get into that, quite frankly.
Does it matter, the fact that the people actually voted on the general plan?
Well, the city adopted the general plan and there was a referendum to basically repeal it, so it was approved as it was. To modify the general plan does not require an election, but it does require council action and if members of the public don't like what the council has done, regardless of what that amendment may be. It's a legislative act and subject to referendum, so a matter could always be put on the ballot. I think UPC, quite frankly, is expecting that whole issue to go to the ballot anyway. So regardless of what kind of housing, if any, is, is the proposal, you know, we could very well be looking at an election to have the voters ratify that decision in any case.
Thank you, thank you.
So I didn't, I guess then, at what point would, would we discuss that? I mean, as far as you coming back with an answer to that question.
Well, the point at which the rubber meets the road is when, you know, you make a decision on the specific plan. Whatever's in the EIR, I think I've already given the council a memo to the effect that studying it, studying something in the EIR does not prohibit the council from saying, that is not what we're going to accept in the specific plan. It's only an alternative and no matter how it's studied in the EIR, the council always reserves the right to reject the alternative. So merely studying it in the EIR does not mean that it's part of the plan, it's simply an alternative that is being looked at in terms of its environmental impact. And when you come down to the point of actually approving a specific plan, that's really when the policy decision is made as to whether any housing at all will be allowed and if so, in what numbers. Right now, all you're going to be getting is data and not a decision. The decision will depend on what the council does with that data and what you decide to do in terms of the, the specific plan itself. And, and I would again emphasize that the level of study in the EIR has absolutely nothing to do with the decision of the council on whether or not you're going to accept housing. It only tells you, if you do allow some housing, what the environmental effects of that housing may be and based upon the number of units. It certainly does not preclude the council from saying, we want a lesser number of units, nor does it preclude the council from saying, we don't want any at all, or we'll, we'll stick with the existing policy of prohibiting all housing on the Baylands and continue the existing general plan policy. So all of those options are open, all we're doing right now is, you know, environmental assessments of hypotheticals, basically. And the council can make the final decision as to what, what the actual plan will contain.
Okay. Now, in the, I guess in the EIR, we're not, we're studying most of the data of what's already been tested, but nothing recently updated, like specifically in the landfill area.
I think I'd have to defer to John on that, and I know there's a lot of technical studies being conducted and I think there's some new testing going on as well, but, you know, John may be able to answer that better than I could.
The consultants will be going through an exercise of identifying data gaps. Again, that'll be in reviewing the materials that have been developed to date and if they've, in their judgment, there's a need for additional data collection to support an environmental finding, that, that would be part of the EIR processes.
Okay. I think, I think we requested that, right, Clay?
Well, you also get into the issue of what data is needed for the EIR to identify impacts and what data is needed to correct impacts that have been identified by way of mitigation measures. So even if the EIR identifies some impacts, there still may be some further studies or tests required in order to determine or to implement mitigation measures. So there are different levels of testing depending upon where in the process we might be at any given point in time.
And with regards to, I guess, the request to summarize the comments, the, I'll speak for John here, I mean, we've got a number of things on the table right now and I don't know that we're necessarily going to be ready to come back in two weeks on that.
Okay.
But in general, I think herein lies kind of the problem with this conversation, is that we can bring you a summary of comments, but there won't be any information to go along with it.
Right.
And that's what the EIR is for. And so I'm not really, I mean, while it's an interesting exercise and, you know, probably stimulating to some people, you know, I probably find it stimulating myself, but I'm not sure it's going to really add to the conversation at this point. I mean, that's what the whole concept of the EIR is about.
Yeah. You think it's premature at this time, or is...
Well, I, you know, I have not had a chance to talk with Ray about any of these suggestions. I mean, it, it has struck me for a long time, as I think the council knows, that we have very elaborate conversations and debates, but we have no data over which to have the conversation and the debate about. And that's what the whole purpose of the EIR is. Once we have that draft EIR, then we can have, as a community, we can have a more informed conversation. And we can go back and forth, I'm sure that's going to be a very lively and process and very robust process and as well it should be. But it will be around data and, and we can identify gaps in the data, we can create various arguments around, you know, where we think the data is strong and where we think it's weak and where we need to embellish it and what, you know, to what extent we think maybe the EIR does or doesn't answer some of the questions that have been raised by the, the various agencies. You know, the council has been through EIR processes before, the Quarry is probably the, the largest one in the, in the past and it's, you know, it's a series of meetings and you go through the various sections of the EIR document and there's a number of questions that come up and then the consultants go back and they respond to those questions. So there's a, there's a process that's involved in all that. And I think that that's, that's a healthy process because you're starting to window down the, you know, what, what the points of contention are in terms of the, the actual information that's being put out there.
Well, maybe you can meet with Ray and talk with him.
I'd love, we could have a friendly discussion.
If you can have lunch. Okay.
Anything else? Okay, let's adjourn to a closed session.
So moved.[1575.65]